Good evening. I'd like to call to order the January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three regular school committee meeting at five twenty-nine P. M. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to convene an executive session, non-public session, to discuss the approval of the December seventh, two thousand and twenty-two executive session minutes and collective bargaining pertaining to TTA teachers.
Make that motion.
And second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Russo, a second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. School committee will reconvene in open session after executive session at six P. M. for the public session budget workshop. Following that, at six thirty P. M., we'll reconvene the business portion of our regular school committee meeting public session. Thank you. We now reconvene in public open session at
We now reconvene in public open session at 6:03 PM to hold our first budget workshop, which is our regular business meeting that will take place at 6:30 PM. So I will move to introduce Dr. Osborne, who's going to do our first review of this year's budget. All right, welcome. Thank you.
So tonight, there are usually, you know, about three presentations that we do for the budget. Tonight's sort of the, you know, 60,000 view, foot view from the top. We've looked at the numbers and so essentially, you know, what we feel is the district strategy really feels strongly about getting consistent growth among our students and staff to achieve academic, social, and emotional success for all students. So that's sort of what we look at when we're doing the budget. And so the, there are four major parts of what our budget consists of. There are three of them that we basically manage. And then one that's managed by the town. So the parts that we can control are the salary, the operating costs, and the capital outlay. The fixed costs, which the town manages, those are things like health, retirement, Medicaid, unemployment, principal and interest on different loans and buildings and all of that. So as part of this budget process, these were sort of, these were some of the things, some of the challenges. First of all, we're a little bit behind schedule because we have the brand-new, exact, lovely Center Elementary School, which is awesome. And it just opened a couple, well, not even a week ago, tomorrow actually, right? Yeah. So we moved all of the grade two, three, and four students there. So reallocation of resources, we're just kind of getting an idea as to how much that's going to be. We've only got a few days of that, six months of data with the new building structure. So as we're going along in this process, we'll, you know, be making changes. Schools are still feeling the effects of COVID-19, and students are recovering from learning loss. So operations have still been affected. So basically, what we do is we use last year's actuals, we use this year's to date, and then we make an estimated guess as to how much things are. Things like, you know, salaries, there's not a lot we can do with that. But we are looking at ways to move things around. The grants, the large COVID grants that we got, the ESAR grants, those are going to end in FY '24. So we've got one more year of that. And then the preschool restructure, adding some of that, which Mrs. Gersh and Ms. Bosworth are going to talk about later on in the presentation. So this is what we've come up with in terms of the budget for next year, for FY '24. It's about a 3% increase. And generally, you know, this is consistent with what the town manager has looked at. The salary, which is about 70% of our budget, increase of 2.98%, and that's, you know, steps, cost of living adjustments, looking at grant-funded positions. And I'll talk a little bit about that later. The operating total, so that number's up 3.46%, which is a lot. A lot of that has to do with the tuition. Out-of-district placements is up about 14% from what we're hearing from the out-of-district schools. Also, transportation, we're actually bidding out our transportation contract soon. And, but from what we're hearing from other school districts is that's up at about a 10% increase in transportation costs, which sort of makes sense, given gas prices and all of that. So the operating total is about 28% of the budget. And then the capital outlay is about 2. And capital outlay is acquisition of buildings, site improvements, and sort of the big-ticket items that kind of look at the sites and the buildings in the town. And all of these numbers, you can see in the packet that you got before. There's a couple of spreadsheets that have everything sort of all broken down into different, you know, exact what schools, what positions, all of that. And so these are some of the capital projects that we've been working on. The lighting at the Ryan and the Wynn in the gyms, those have been completed already this year. So we're still working on this. And then we're in the process of meeting with the department chairs or with the principals of the buildings to look to see what else we need to take a look at and then prioritize where we need to spend all that money. But these are the things that we've got on our plate as of now. And again, as usual, we've got grants, grant-funded. There's 56 separate funds, which are either grants or revolving accounts. And so we use some of that money to look at, instead of coming out of the budget, some of the salaries might come out of a grant, or they'll come out of a revolving account if it has to do with that. For example, we will have some of the, like, athletic salaries come out of the athletic revolving account. And then there's approximately 35 positions that are funded either fully or partially from this. It depends on the grant, but all of the grants, you must, they have to be, have a specific purpose, and they must be related to the purpose of the fund, whether it's a grant or revolving type of account that's driven by fees, like food services, et cetera. And the positions are also in the packet that you have, the positions that we have that are grant-funded. And then we also currently have about, you know, a little over $3 million in grants that we currently have right now. And if you notice, the first couple, those are the ESAR funds. The first one, we've got some ESAR III money left. Those are the COVID fund, federal money that we got for those. So we still have the ESAR III money that's, that has to be spent next year. So after, by FY '24, that money has to be spent. And then some of these are money, some of these are grants that we get every year. They're sort of entitlement grants, and those are the title grants. And some of the title grants, we usually will get the SPED 240 grant and the early childhood grant, if you notice. The 240 grant in the pink, that we also got ARP money in addition to the 240 and the 262. Those are special ed, education improvement grants. The 240, the early childhood is for the pre-K people, and then the other ones are for the rest of the students. And if you notice that in FY '23, we didn't get those extra funds this year. But then there's additional monies that we're getting from 21st Century Learning and all of the title grants. Those numbers, if you notice, like, they'll change slightly year by year, depending on the population of students and all of that. And these are numbers like as of the end of December. And so next steps, continue discussions with the principals, the department heads, the elected officials, town officials, teachers, parents, students, and community members to refine and react to ever-changing needs. So things that, right now, we're in January. By the time things sort of come to an end in May, we'll be looking at this more and more and again and again. So, and as the needs and/or the resources change, we'll be refining the project list, which represents a snapshot in time of the current needs of the district. And the process is going to continue essentially from now until May. And it will inevitably produce some differences in some of these numbers, so. And that's it. That's all we got.
Okay. Are there any questions? Mr. Sullivan?
Sure. Thank you. My best. I, yeah, Mr. Libby is not feeling well, so I hear he needs plenty of rest. He's probably home watching this if he needs some real rest.
Uh-oh. No, I'm in trouble now.
You know, it's a first meeting without you, so you're doing wonderful, Mrs. Osborne. I'm not sure if you'll have an answer to my question. I see we have $2.7 million with the ESAR III that we can use for the fiscal year. My question is, obviously, retention's a big thing here in the district. Do you know how many employees currently that we have that are dependent on that ESAR funding and maybe what that number looks like?
So I believe, I want to say, I think it's roughly... It was in one of the documents, which now I can't find it.
Six or seven plus?
So ESAR, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12. Right now, there's about 12 positions. Some of the, a couple of those are adjustment counselors, and then there's an L teacher.
Yeah, nurse.
But, and then there's principal support funding. So what we're doing is we're discussing how to move forward with those and sort of prioritize where we do. And I know that, you know, Brenda and Dave have been working on looking at enrollment numbers and going forward in terms of seeing where things can shuffle around. Because some of those positions that we were able to fund with the ESAR money are going to be things that we might, you know, want to continue with as we move forward.
Madam Chair, through you.
Yes.
At least six or seven of them, seven of them are direct student support, highly needed student support, and that we need to really think forward on how we keep them in our general budget after the grant dollars. We've already rolled some of the support positions that we receive with ESAR II funding into the regular budget. And a real deep dive in some of the work we still have to do is continuously looking at our decreasing enrollment, but our increase in staff that we need, and how we might start to balance maintaining these support positions if we look at our other staff. Because, you know, every staff that directly impacts students are so important, but these counseling supports we put in place have to stay. So we have to really evaluate, you know, whether by attrition or, you know, class size, how we can maintain these positions, not only through next year, but the years after. So that's a great question, because the grant dollars have been really a wonderful gift. But in the staff we've received because of it has been really sorely needed in the district for our students. But we want to be able to continue to pay for them.
Great. I agree. Thank you. That's all I have now.
That's all. Thank you. Anybody else have questions?
Yeah.
Ms. B. Johnny Smith?
Um, sorry. And thank you again for presenting as well. And maybe you have the answer to this. Can you speak to the reason possibly why the special ed grants we had last year are not going to be there?
Those were special COVID grants that we got, yeah, last year that we don't get. Usually, we do get the 240 and the 262 grants every year from the federal government.
Do you know if that's something that we relied on this past year, that we're going to be looking to make up for, I guess?
Not, I mean, the salaries and the people that are working directly with students, I think it was sort of an extra that we had with that. So, I mean, I know that we use it, we use it to, and we are continuing because there's a rollover grant. So those grants that were for FY '22 that were listed on that need to be spent by the end of September this year. So they're continuing to be spent to support students. But there are sort of less, personally, I think that they're...
Well, and if, again, through you, Madam Chair, there's always a balancing act. So for example, the title grants that Dr. Osborne was talking about, any given year, we could be looking at either about $150,000 for all four entitlement grants to $350,000. We maintain our literacy support staff. It's whether it's in the general budget or whether it's in the grant. When it's in the grant, that makes room for other resources or other supports we can offer. So it's a balancing act. I mean, we, we know we've brought in additional related service, OT, SLP, with or without the grant we've needed to maintain those supports. The ESAR grant, as I said, was a huge relief. But when these grants recede, or if we ever get to a place, it would be a good thing if our entitlement grant went down. That means our low-income percentage went down. But it's hard then to maintain all the supports we have. We have to find it somewhere.
Okay. And is that where those revolving accounts kind of come into play that you were talking about?
It didn't here, sir.
Oh, sorry. Is that where the revolving accounts kind of come into play that you were talking about? That you would backfill or...
Well, we're hoping to see increase in circuit breaker. We don't have, we don't have enough information on that right now. But, and we are seeing extreme increases, not just in transportation. Dr. Osborne touched on two of those big increases, transportation, special ed out-of-district services, and including our own collaborative services. We know that there are increases across the board that we have to, that are baked into this budget now. So we're hoping to see increase in circuit breaker reimbursements.
Thank you.
Mr. Russo?
Hi. Yes, just a couple small questions. Thank you, first of all, Dr. Osborne, for presenting tonight, this evening. Just want to clarify, so the budget totals that you showed up there, the summary, that is sort of per, you know, the town manager's office, sort of considered level-funded, correct?
Yeah.
That 3% increase?
To some extent, like, there's a $1.6 million increase, like, that was what, yeah.
Okay. And then just sort of going along the lines of what my colleague, Mr. Sullivan, asked. In terms of sort of the COVID, the ESAR III grant itself, I know we said 12, roughly 12 employees are included in that. That's not all just specifically for employees. Those are, there are other support services maybe that are being provided in there that are sort of outside of salaries, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, okay. Because, I mean, obviously, there's an increase from ESAR II to ESAR III. So I would imagine, obviously, a lot of the hires that we made over the last, you know, several months, some of those are reflected as a part of the ESAR III money that's coming.
Correct.
And in addition, on those grants too, you know, we're looking at increasing or improving the HVAC, the air quality at the schools and all of that. So it's all within those, like, that particular grant, those particular grants.
Those are big-ticket items.
And those are, yeah, that's a big...
So that sort of brings me to my last question, really, is on the capital outlay. All those plans, and I know some of them are long plan, or longer-range plans, if you will, or extend over multiple fiscal years. The budget that we had for this year for capital outlay, plus the budget that you've shared with us this evening for next year, is all of that to encompass all of these projects? Or do we think that there's more dollars needed in future fiscal years, depending on the length of the project, maybe?
I think it's one of those things, sort of like your house, right? You know, there's always something that has to get done and get fixed and all of that stuff.
Yeah.
And I think that it's very similar in this instance. But I think that what we have in the budget, we'll be able to do the vast majority of what is listed on that, on that sheet, yeah.
Okay. Great. That's all I have. Thank you.
As well as the grant funding that we know we have and all of that.
That would cover some of those. Yep. Got it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Parsons, anything?
I think my colleagues covered all my questions, so I'm good.
I don't have any questions at this time. I, you know, I look forward to next month. I'll digest a lot more of this, and then we'll see Mr. Libby next month, hopefully. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Osborne? So at this time, it's 6:21. We would be coming back with our regular meeting at 6:30. Would entertain a motion to...
Make a motion to recess until 6:30?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we will return at 6:30. Thank you. Okay, and we will return at 6:30. Thank you.
Okay, welcome back. We now reconvene our January 11th, 2023 Regular School Committee meeting at 6:30 PM. And at this time, if you could all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Sullivan would be free to.
I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and just a brief announcement, the January 11th, 2023 Regular School Committee meeting will be televised and recorded and may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34, or on youtube.com/ChuxburyTV. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anybody's recording tonight's meeting to please identify themselves. Okay, I'm seeing nobody. We now move on to some of our recognitions. We have two recognitions tonight. The TMHS Girls Varsity Volleyball Team, who was MIAA Division III State Champions this last year, congratulations. And Mrs. Terry O'Regan, if you have some words.
I'd like to invite our athletic director, Mr. Ronald Druin, up to the podium. And I certainly would like to invite our volley, girls volleyball coaches and our team to circle around Mr. Druin as he proudly gives you the shout outs you all deserve and you are recognized by the committee tonight.
Thank you for having us. Volleyball team was a lot of fun to chase around all fall. They were, you know, determined and, and a year ago, they got beat in the semifinals three to two, last game, tie game, 10-10, they ended up dropping the thing 15 to 12. Kind of played with a chip on their shoulder all year long and get to the state tournament and they don't, they don't drop a set until the state finals, they don't drop a game until the state finals. In the semifinals, they, they swept Newburyport three to nothing. In the state finals, they beat Dennis, Dennis Yama three to one, the one game being the only one they lost all tournament. Just a fantastic group of young ladies, highly likable. You know, Coach Loopy was the Boston Globe Coach of the Year. Karina Baron was Player of the Year. Kylie Kennedy, Ava Fernandez, Tori Rowe were all first team, all conference. Just a tremendous accomplishment, 21 and four, I think was their overall record, the most wins in the history of the school. So just a lot of fun to chase them around, a lot of fun to work with them. Couldn't be more proud of them and their coaching staff. They work so hard every day at practice and they, they earned a state championship and a lot of great memories to our town and, and the support that the community showed them on their ride to the state championship was just incredible. So very, very proud of them. Thank you guys for having us here, and I know we have a citation if you guys want to read that for them.
Thank you, Mr. Druin. It's impressive to hear all these, all this factual information that you just know off the top of your head.
All right, bear with me, this is a long one. So whereas the TMHS Girls Volley, uh, Varsity Volleyball Team are appearing before the school committee and the Tuxbury community for the second time within the past 12 months. The team has demonstrated hard work, sportsmanship, perseverance and character throughout this 22-23 season. Members including Karina Baron, Chloe Burns, Michaela Conley, Olivia Cuevas, Ava Fernandez, Vanessa Green, Kylie Kennedy, Jenny Lester, Maddie Montejo, Charlotte Morris, Julia Mora, Ava Nordberg and Terry Rowe. Team captains, Terry Rowe, Karina Baron and Ava Fernandez. Head coach, Allison Loopy, assistant coach, Kaitlin Stokes and Erin Murphy. Athletic trainer, Chris Mahana and athletic director, Ron Durwin. Whereas the Girls Varsity Volleyball Team are the MIAA 22 Division III State Champions with a 21-4 overall record and holds the TMH record for most wins in school history. And whereas the Girls Varsity Volleyball Team defeated Newburyport three no, three to oh, three to zero, I don't know how you say that, in the semifinals and defeated Dennis Yama in the state finals, three to one. First set, they dropped the entire tournament. And whereas team member and captain, Karina Baron, was chosen to the Boston Globe Super Team and head coach, Allison Loopy, was chosen to the Boston Globe as Boston Globe Coach of the Year. And whereas the TMHS Girls Varsity Volleyball Team have brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm and honor to themselves, their parents and families to the Tuxbury Memorial High School and to the town of Tuxbury. Thank you all so much.
She's got cool shoes. She's hip.
Okay, Mr. Druin, thank you for staying, thank you for staying right there. Do you have some final words to say about the team before we invite?
Well, volleyball team, they've, we've spent a lot of time together, so.
Keith? Mr. Druin, I'd just like to thank the girls. My son's an avid sports player, he's a freshman here. He's seen a ton of sports. He said the most exciting high school game he's ever seen. Good job, girls.
Comments?
Yeah, no, fantastic.
Thank you guys so much for coming, we appreciate it. Mr. Druin?
Volleyball was not the only state championship that we hung this, this fall. Our esports team, which is a relatively new program at the high school, our club advisor, Mr. Sanford Abigas slash coach, has a handful of boys that are into gaming and our esports team was the state champs this year in, in Rocket League. They play a couple of different styles of esports and in Rocket League, we were, so why don't we get those guys up and Mr. Abigas? In Rocket League, we were the state champs. In the semifinal, they went down to Patriots Place and Patriots Place has, correct me if I'm wrong, Patriots Place has a, I'm going to call it a fancy gaming room, yeah, fancy gaming room. And they went down to play in this high tech gaming room where the state championship is held. And they defeated Burlington in the semifinals, I believe it was four to nothing. And then in the state final, they were trailing Shrewsbury two nothing and then ripped off the next four games to win the state championship four to two. Great group of kids. Mr. Abigas does a, a real good job with them after school and, and they are, you know, a pleasure to root for and another easy, you know, group, team to cheer on and extremely likable and work hard, just like all our other athletes and, and very, very proud of those guys, so our esports team.
Is that your trophy back here?
Let's get that in the picture. Parsons, you got these guys?
So whereas the TMHS Esports Team demonstrated hard work, sportsmanship, perseverance and character throughout the 2022 to 23 competition season, to the team advisor Sanford Abigas, team members Peter Impink, Andy Harlaka, Tofi Balone and Jonas Imenez. And whereas TMHS Esports Team earned a spot in the MSAA Rocket League Tournament, it defeated Burlington four to zero in the semifinals and went on to defeat Shrewsbury four to two in the finals after trailing two to zero. And whereas TMHS Esports Team is the MSAA Rocket League 2022 State Champions. And whereas the TMHS Esports Team have brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm and honor to themselves, to their parents and families, to Tuxbury Memorial High School and to the town of Tuxbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tuxbury School Committee applauds, honors and recognizes the many achievements of the TMHS Esports Team and their advisor.
Thank you guys for coming in. Congratulations.
Ms. Garbi, if I could just get two seconds and I'll, I'll be out of your way. Just want to kind of debrief you guys. We had our first ever MVC Leadership Summit, Leadership Summit today at Songus Arena. 10 students from all 11 schools in the conference, 110 kids at the Songus, big success. I thought it was great. We brought in three different speakers, one a community service piece, one an anxiety and athletics piece, and one was diversity, equity, inclusion. The MIAA sponsored almost all of it. The conference just had to kind of take care of, taking care of speakers. Great event today. I, I thought the kids, you know, the kids came back and, and went into Mr. Long's office right away, they wanted to bring in some of the speakers here to the high school. First one we ever had in the conference and I thought it was a home run for the first time we did it, so I kind of wanted to clue you guys in on that. And secondly, if you go in the gym right now, there's no banners hanging on the wall. So all the banners are down. We ordered all new banners. We didn't have any more space on the walls for our blue banners, which are our sectional or our state championship banners. We didn't have any more space to put them. So we got all new banners that are a little bit more functional, they have a league, league championship area, then they have a sectional championship, then they have a state finalist area, so you can condense a lot of the banners into one banner. And then if they get a state championship, they'll get a blue, which is a state championship banner. So those banners are being put back up this weekend. The new ones are in, they're being put up this weekend. We're actually waiting on two blue ones, girls state championship hockey from 2019 and boys state championship hockey from 2022. Those two are coming, but everything else is in and hung. I am working with different people right now to try to figure out how to, what to do, how to do, how to, best way to utilize the old banners. You know, how we can get them back to, you know, my first thought is kind of the booster groups, how we can get them back out to try to generate some money to directly go to the students, you know, in those particular sports. So we're still working on that and, and as soon as I get a little bit tighter plan, I certainly will circle back to Ms. O'Regan, she can keep you guys in the loop. But we, we do, you know, our intention is to get those out to the booster groups and whether they are raffled off, auctioned off, sold, whatever, to try to raise some money for each team off of banners that are 40 years old, you know, so. But if you go in there right now, that's why the banners are down, new ones, and the intention is to get them hung up this weekend. Just wanted to kind of keep you guys in the loop. Thank you for your time. Any questions on anything?
No questions.
Nope.
No questions.
Everybody good?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for joining us. And so tonight, Rania is not joining us, so she will rejoin us again next month in February. We will now move on to our presentation. I don't know if you'd like to introduce the Mrs. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If, with us tonight are the Heathbrook Principal, Ms. Terry Gerish, our Doing School Principal, Ms. Alexis Bosworth, Special Ed Director, Mr. Richard Palatier. Not with us tonight, but with us in spirit is Dr. Cindy Bastieri, who does lead the extended day community service portion of our preschool programming. So if we could have our principals up to the podium. They have a presentation to share with you. If you remember, one of our district goals was how do we reflect the programming we have for preschool at the Doing Districtwide at the Heathbrook, so that there's a balance of options for all of our students, they don't have to cross district boundaries, if you will, to go to another school at preschool. So this is the presentation our principals have put together for you and welcome any questions. questions you might have.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Thank you Superintendent Regan and Mrs. McDermott. I would like to, we are so excited to share with you this evening our plan for the next level of preschool and early childhood education in the town of Tewksbury. We've been, we've been talking about it for a long time, and I think that it's, it's time to start and to move forward. So Mrs. Bosworth, I'll push the buttons and you can talk.
Okay, that works, that works for me until the last page and then.
I'll talk about the money.
Okay. So also just keep in mind, Dr. Cindy Bastieri is our Director of Community Services. She is here with us in spirit and on TV, and so she's also been a huge part of this. So ultimately, our goal in, in taking on the position or making our position changes at the end of last year with Mrs. Gerish moving over to the Heathbrook and myself continuing at the Doing School, one of our big focuses is to really create equal preschool programs at both of our schools. So historically, over the years, the Doing School has housed all of the special education preschool programs for the entire district. We have seen tremendous growth in our programs. And we do, we provide wonderful, wonderful services, but we know that the time has come to be able to provide those equal services to our families and students at the Heathbrooks so we can minimize their transitions and enjoy their Heathbrook community.
We want every child to be able to go to school in their, in their neighborhood school and to be able to offer a continuity of services and programming at each of the schools for the same range of age students.
Oh, that's right, you're clicking. Go for it.
I wasn't supposed to talk either.
Go for it.
And sorry, not to interrupt, but I noticed that you're on crutches, Mrs. Bosworth. If you want to sit and join us, that's fine, too.
I'm working on building my strength in my left leg. Thank you, I appreciate it. So, and this makes, makes us talk quicker. So, so just to give you a little bit of background, as I said, we provide the, the special education preschool services for the district at the Doing School. We provide tremendous services. We've seen a tremendous amount of growth in our program as well as with each of our individual students. It's not offered at the Heathbrook. What is offered at the Heathbrook has been the community services program, which has given families an opportunity to access a full-day program at the Heathbrook School. Unfortunately, because of some space constraints, we weren't able to offer that at the Doing School. So if you came to the Doing over the past couple of years, you were only able to access half-day programming. If you went to the Heathbrook, a very limited number, I believe 45 students were able to offer, were able to receive full day. And it didn't matter what side of town you lived on, you could access either of those services. However, if you required special education services, those could only be provided at the Doing School.
Correct.
So we did want to just take note quickly, with those two preschool programs that we have, both at the Heathbrook as well as the Doing School, we are continuing to offer the, the program, the child development program at the high school. At this point, we're not discussing any changes to that program. It's a fantastic program for four-year-old students, and it really supports our high school students. The only change we're looking at is a slight increase in, in their tuition, and their tuition has been historically $50 for the entire school year and no additional fees. We'd just like to increase that to $100, but I think that that's fair considering it's a full year of, of programming for $100. But we won't talk about the high school program this evening any further. So just currently, we have 115 students at the Doing School. Just kind of the breakdown I have here, we have 10 students that are tuition-paying students from the Heathbrook, 33 students receiving special education services whose home address would have them eligible for residence at Heathbrook, 29 from the Doing, and then, excuse me, 29 tuition from the Doing, and then 43 students receiving special education services from the Doing. And then on the flip side, we have the 45 full-day students at the community services Heathbrook program, 35 of whom are from the Heathbrook, and 10 of them are from the Doing. So just by looking at those numbers alone, you can kind of see that there's, there's a pretty big imbalance, and we'd like to just help balance that out. Currently at the Doing School, for our special education programs, we have four integrated preschool programs, three of them, excuse me, three of them are.
Full day, two sessions.
Nope, just had a mind block, but let me, let me start over. So four of them in the morning session are for our four-year-old students. In the afternoon, we have three, three classrooms that are afternoon classrooms for our three-year-old students, and then we have one that we call our Language Motor Group, which is a very targeted program for any students who turn three and require some more intensive special education services before they're eligible for two years of preschool. We also have five substantially separate DLC classrooms. Just to give you a little bit of information, in the, I believe, I've been here approximately 11 years in different capacities, we started with one DLC preschool program. We now have five. Our needs of our students have increased significantly, and we know that we have to keep our class numbers relatively small in order to, to support the needs of those students. So we've, we added the fifth this year. We will be asking for a sixth for next year.
One of the things that we have now is through Dr. Bastieri, through the community services, parents have been able to enroll students for, for full-day slots from 8:00 to 2:30 every day. So, but what we're looking to do as we go forward is our special education, the needs of our special education students drive the need for the programming for us to be, and in order to complete the services and to be in compliance with state and federal law, we have to have a balance of students with IEPs and students who are typically developing or students without IEPs. So we thought one of the wonderful, one of the things we can do is to blend these two things together for an efficiency and economy of scale so that we use and, and make available for families an opportunity to come and be in part of. These children who come to the Heathbrook now go to a morning class and an afternoon class, have two different teachers. At this point, what we're proposing is to have them, instead of having both classes, like one of the classes will be a class with a special education, a DESI licensed teacher.
So basically, what we'd like to do is combine and split equally. We are looking at, having brought over to the Heathbrook two integrated preschool classrooms based upon our numbers that we have right now currently, as we know those will change as new students become eligible for services. But right now, we're looking at the potential of two integrated preschool classrooms at Heathbrook, three substantially separate DLC classrooms at the Heathbrook. And in addition, one community services preschool classroom, possibly two depending on interest and space availability. That community services preschool program, essentially what the students would do is if they come to an integrated preschool program in the morning, they would transition to their extension program. Some families need a longer day, as we know, if they have to work a full day or they just want their children to receive preschool services. So they would transition over to the community services extension program for the balance of the day. On the flip side, if they're three, they would start in community services in the morning, and then they would transition to our integrated preschool program in the afternoon. So they'll have a full day of services if they're interested, or if they just want to attend for the two and a half hours every day, they are more than welcome to do so.
So one of the thing, we've been talking about this for a number of years in terms of how do we best serve the needs of the families in our town while providing the best possible services for, for our children who have additional needs?
So I suppose I jumped ahead a little bit.
You did.
And the slide has been covered. So all of this information is based upon our current numbers. We know that this may change as students become eligible for services. So I spoke about needing two integrated preschool classrooms at the Heathbrook. We would actually like to place three integrated classrooms at the Doing School and three substantially separate classrooms at the Doing School. However, if we find out that the need at the Heathbrook is a little bit higher in terms of students who reside on the Heathbrook side of town, we may have to switch that third integrated classroom and send it over to the Heathbrook.
And so, so that you have an idea of the order of magnitude and numbers of students, each integrated classroom has up to 15 students. Half of those students, seven, up to seven of those students are children with, with IEPs, and then seven or eight of the students are students who are typically developing or students without diagnosis or disability and are able to come, and they come as role models so that we have a nice, there's, there's a wonderful balance of students being able to play and learn together.
So that's basically, that's basically it. We're really excited about the prospect of being able to bring some programs over to the Heathbrook. We've been working very hard on this. We would love the opportunity. We've kind of, typically, we inform families about our preschool programming in December of the, the year before in order to have them have information and make the best decisions for themselves and their families as to what kind of programming they, they would like, whether it be the public school, whether it be private programs within the district. We had to do a little bit of work this year, and this is why we have not sent information out to families yet. We wanted to share the information with the school committee first, and we have a, we have a flyer that I believe you also have in your packet, which explains all of the preschool programs. We won't go, we won't go through that, but this is what we would like to be able to send out to all families on the census within the next couple of weeks if everything looks okay to the committee. And then we can, so it's in there, it's in your packets. There's a lot of information in there. And then we also would like.
It's extremely interesting if you have a child of this age and are looking for a wonderful, warm learning environment.
We would also like to have the opportunity to inform our students of, our parents of students who receive special education services right now, to inform them of the proposed move over to the Heathbrook School because we, about half of our students that we're currently servicing at the Doing would actually transition to the Heathbrook.
We're having, we're having some preliminary conversations with we, we've been saying ever since, you know, Superintendent Regan had said, one of the, one of the goals for the town as we move forward for the school department is to look at the, the ability to provide equity and programming to students in the neighborhoods that go, so that children can go to their neighborhood school with the kids that go, who are on their street and, and be able to do that. And so thanks to the work of Mr. Pelletier and his staff and being able to help put all, working with Mrs. Tharrett and Mrs. Regan and Mrs. Bosworth and meeting with our teams, taking a look at what are the needs of the children, what are the needs, what do we need to do in order to provide a rich learning experience, to satisfy the legal requirements, and also to make sure that what we're doing is, is financially sound and equitable as well. So we, we, we look at a lot of the things. The other thing that we place, have in here that, there's a tuition, I, I'm, I'll, I'll show it to you, and you can certainly read it at your leisure, but there are opportunities for children, for people who are paying tuition to pay either for a half-day or a full-day, depending on the amount of time. There is an increase in, in tuition. Tuition for students, for Tewksbury families has not risen in over 10 years. And so even, one of the things that Mrs. Bosworth and Mr. Pelletier's office had done is that they, they sought and did a lot of research for, I think probably a dozen of the towns around this general area to see what, what the fees were for families, to make sure that we were comparable. Even with the increases that we're putting in, we are still less than any of the surrounding towns. So we're still trying to, we're offering high-quality products and high-quality education for not an additional, for, for very, I want to say good value for the money, but I, that sounds kind of funny, doesn't it? The other thing that, that we're looking at, we also work with Mr. Libby with, with the numbers and the tuition and everything. As we look to increase an extra, an extra classroom or two, we want, we realize that comes with a cost, and so we're looking at the tuition, and we're looking to see how can we make sure that it's a close to a net zero impact on the town budget-wise so that we can look at the way that the money that goes into the revolving fund, the way that the grants and the special education grants for the preschool and the early childhood are used to fund it, so that we can use blended funding sources to pay for this programming. And so that we, and that's why we need, we need the district oversight with that, too. Mrs. Regan?
I truly appreciate, Madam Chair, and I hope all of the members of the committee do. Terry's now trying to unpack the many months of very detailed planning that many, many people have done to present this proposal, if you will, or presentation to you. I don't think one stone has gone unturned, and we feel, if I said that correctly, we feel very, very confident this is the right time and the right move for Tewksbury. We have the space in our schools and, and, and the plan that should meet the needs of more preschool students moving forward. I just wanted to, so that you don't forget, can you just share with the committee this little piece? This is just starting at the preschool piece with DLCs and preschool, meaning we're not looking to move anybody comfortably sitting in a DLC right now at the Doing.
Right. Because one of the things.
So can you talk about that a little bit?
That those conversations, when you talk about equity and programming, one of the things that, we have to be child-centered in our decision-making, and in order to do that, we have, we look at the transitions from school to school, and we also look at the, the, our children who are more fragile in their learning and for whom transitions are very difficult. And Superintendent Regan has been, has said, we really do need to make sure that we, we protect those families and those students and that we roll things in, in a way, and and put them in, and implement them in such a way as to have the least amount of negative impacting on any of the families and to do it positively as they start school. And then as they continue, we will organically grow the DLC classrooms in kindergarten and first grade.
We have approximately 12 students right now who will be transitioning to kindergarten in the fall, who require some level of support through our developmental learning centers. We would like to keep those kindergarteners and the, and the current kindergarteners who will be transitioning to first grade, we would like to keep them at the Doing School so that they can, they can continue their time with us until they have to transition to the Center Elementary School. When the students who, our three-year-old students who have become eligible for services this year and for our students who will become eligible next year, we will start the planning for the DLC K1 programming at the Heathbrook for those students who reside there. But we felt very strongly as a collective team of about 10 of us, that we need to do what's right for our kids and what's right for our families.
That was a spirited conversation, wasn't it?
It was. It was. And we, we, we love, we love our students and we are, we're happy to keep them at the Doing until they transition to Center School. And then sometimes we go and visit if we can.
We do, we do. We spent some time this morning over at Center School, and I think Mrs. Bosworth and I went into every second-grade class today. It has nothing to do with what we just proposed, but we just missed our kids.
We caused a ruckus. We caused a ruckus.
We did make some noise, yeah.
Are you okay if we open to questions?
Yes, please.
Please, whatever you need.
Any questions from the committee?
Sure, I'll start. Yes, thank you for the presentation. I think it's wonderful. I know Rick and I were around back when there was some, I don't know if you want to call it redistricting or shuffling. I think this is certainly on an improved situation and environment for all our students. So I'm, I'm fully in support of this. So thank you for your hard work, and I'm looking forward to seeing how it's going to benefit our students. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody on the side?
I have more question.
Ms. Bead, respond.
So I was trying to pay attention to the numbers and do the balancing of like, even losing two or three here and gaining two or three here. Is the number of students going to increase with this, do you think, or is that staying?
Not, not a lot. Right now, we're trying to, to make sure that we can serve the same number of families. So there might be a net increase of one class between the two schools, but that's based on the enrollment and the, and the meeting, and the eligibility of students who are currently identified.
If I can just interject.
Sure.
Our tuition-paying students, we've struggled over the past couple of years at the Doing School to, to fill our tuition slots because two hours and 15 minutes a day is sometimes not what all families need, and we didn't have the option for the extension program. Whereas the Heathbrook program filled within 30 seconds. And so we, I hope that this will help us increase our tuition services and the number of students. And, and so not only would it be helpful for the community, but it would also be helpful for our compliance numbers as well because we are supposed to have a, a higher number of tuition students than students receiving special education services. And by off, by being able to have the option of offering families this extension program through community services at both of the schools, I anticipate that those numbers will rise for our tuition students in the district.
That's great, thank you. Yeah, we use, my family uses the in-town preschool programs and love it, and I love that it's expanding and could possibly allow more.
Thank you.
To go to where they want to be versus kind of where they had to be.
Yes.
So thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Rousseau?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. It's nice to actually talk about our most impressionable kid, where, you know, there's so much, always so much focus at the high school level, which, you know, due to, you know, even with the recognitions here this evening. Just a couple of questions, and I think you did touch upon this. All the funding that goes. that goes into this, based on the proposal that you have for 23, 24 school year, all of that essentially at this point, based on what you propose, is essentially going to be covered by either grants from special education grants or tuition payments?
Mr. Russo, there are a number of funding sources, and I can't articulate every single one, but there's a local budget component. There is a special education federal grant budget that are entitlement grants. There are some, there are some competitive grants, and then there's the revolving, there are revolving accounts with the tuition, so that there's a blended funding source.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess the reason why I mention it, just to get clarity on it, is because what you've proposed here, I think, is wonderful. I think it's going to provide a lot of equity amongst the town. I mean, you hear, you know, hey, how come this side has it, this side doesn't? And we've heard that argument over the last several years. And so I think that what you've proposed sort of lays that out beautifully. And if there was additional funding sources needed, I wanted to make sure that we were able to support that.
Thank you.
I believe Mr. Libby was able to move some things around in his initial budget proposal in order to have it all in the-
Yes, I spoke with him the last time he was here.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Parsons, anything?
Okay, so you guys addressed every concern or question that I could possibly conjure up. So thank you for your exhaustive work. Really looking forward to this and definitely have support here. And thank you for the cookbook.
They did a great job. A great job. Mr. Parsons is talking about Dr. Bastieri's staff, or our Heathbrook staff, had a holidays around the world, and families came and shared not only recipes, but student drawings and stories about how the families enjoyed those. So we're hoping to see more of that. They have a fabulous, fabulous staff, and we're glad to be incorporating them all together. Yeah?
Can I have just two quick questions? They probably could be bigger questions, but don't feel obligated to go into too much depth. I'm assuming that Alphabet is on board, that they will be able to take on, no?
Alphabet, our understanding is that Alphabet is working through the process of offering-
Yes. Alphabet would be interested in servicing more of our early childhood needs after the school day.
Outside of the regular school day, either before 8:00 AM.
That extended, extended.
That's right, yeah. I'm speaking about extended day type stuff.
So after 2:30 PM. So our hours would be either 8:15 to 10:15, or for the full day, excuse me, 8:15, 8 o'clock, full day until 2:30. We know that some families would like their student, their children to stay longer, at least until dismissal time for their older students, and that's where Alphabet would come into play.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. And then my other question, in terms of support services, will there be allocation of, or is this going to be something where they share buildings, or?
So one of the things, that's why-
That's why Mr. Pelletier is standing here.
Mr. Pelletier is here, because as the Director of Special Education, we pull all the, he will take a look at the data as he does for every school, and he'll look at all of those, and he'll look at the student need and to figure out what the related services are as well as the direct instruction. And then he'll allocate staff with the superintendent accordingly to each of our buildings.
Perfect. Those are all my questions, and it looks exciting, so I look forward to it as well. And financially, I looked at this before. It looked good, too.
Great. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much.
For joining us tonight. Next order of business I just want to take is our Citizens Forum. And if we have anybody here that would like to speak on Citizens Forum, no, seeing nobody? Okay. So then I would like to, because we have some people that have shown up. I have a couple of things I'd like to take out of new business. First, if you would all like to entertain a motion to move from new business, because we're kind of on this preschool path right now, and we have our principals with us, would anybody entertain a motion to move from new business, the preschool new curriculum recommendation?
I'll make that motion, yeah.
And second.
And seconded by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. So at this time, I will turn it over to Mrs. McDermott?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
They'll vote?
Oh, I guess we have to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Okay, so motion passes to move the item out of new business. Mrs. McDermott?
Thank you. So after that wonderful presentation, the other thing that I let you know at our last meeting that we would be looking for your consideration is to let you know that we're seeking approval for a new curriculum resource to support teaching and learning at the preschool level. And so here we are. This does require a roll-call vote. As you know, the resources have been on display throughout the last few weeks at the DOING School, so hopefully you've had a chance to take a look. If not, we did bring some of the resources here that you can feel free to take a look through and pass around. You'll notice they're highly visual. You'll notice culturally responsive texts. You'll notice some incredible manipulatives. It's a comprehensive program with a heavy focus on math and early literacy. The preschool team, which consists of four integrated preschool teachers and five DLC teachers, as well as various related service providers, took a real deep dive into reviewing three different preschool curriculum resources. Those resources were Learning Without Tears, Tools of the Mind, and Frog Street, which is the one that you have in front of you. In order to determine, we were looking to see which resource best meets the needs of our TPS students. It turned out to be a unanimous vote for the Frog Street curriculum. We felt that that meets the needs of our young learners in terms of being the most comprehensive and the most differentiated for our students with and without disabilities from ages three to five. So, Madam Chair, I am recommending that you support the purchase of this preschool curriculum, and this, as I mentioned, does require a roll-call vote.
Any questions?
Just one. So just to clarify, this is to be implemented for the 23, 24 school year if approved this evening, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anybody else?
No.
No. Okay, so I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to move forward with the purchase of this program for the 23, 24 school year as proposed by Ms. McDermott.
I'll second.
Okay. And roll-call vote to adopt the new curriculum recommendation of Frog Street preschool curriculum. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, so that motion passes.
Thank you.
It was impressive to see-
I just, yes.
Yeah, thanks, guys. It was impressive to see the results of, you know, the feedback and just how heavily weighted this program was.
Yeah, and you can see all of the work that the team has been doing in terms of designing, you know, the two programs to match and looking at new resources. It's really an exciting, exciting time.
Madam Chair, if I could just maybe just one more. So just one last thing I'd just like to add to that. The level of diligence that the team put in to evaluating and the amount of time that that probably took is very much appreciated. It really made this decision very easy, for at least from my standpoint, so appreciate the work.
Yeah, if you could convey our thanks to the teachers that took this on. Thank you. Okay. And then seeing some others in the audience here that are in attendance tonight that are here for another item on our new business, I would entertain a motion to move drama program out of state field trip.
I'll make that motion.
And second.
So motion by Mr. Sullivan, second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that motion passes. So I would like to welcome you guys up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With us tonight are Mr. John De Prima and Ms. Celeste Pellegrino, Mr. David Moffett, all very active and enthusiastic, not only teachers within our school district at the middle school and high school, but enthusiastic drama directors and certainly motivators for our students to be involved in the world of the arts. So with, in front of you, in your packet, is a proposal from Mr. De Prima. This will require a roll-call vote to bring back the not only Wynn School trip to Broadway, but also combining the TMHS drama team in this trip. They are proposing to go to Broadway, to New York City on March 18th to see Anne Juliet, and that is not a typo. That is Anne Juliet on Broadway. You have in front of you all of the required components under policy IJOA. You see the date of the trip, all the required field trip permissions, consent and release forms will be required prior to the trip. The proposed itinerary is all in front of you, as well as the details for the cost. We have the sponsors of the trip right here. Let me just say, chaperones for this trip, at least right now, for the minimum of 45 students, will be three teachers, the three in front of you now, Ms. Celeste Pellegrino, Mr. David Moffett, and Mr. Jonathan De Prima, as well as Administrator, Assistant Principal Victoria Cudero. So as I said, this proposal will require a roll-call vote for them to start marketing and getting this trip out to our students.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add before I open it to the committee?
I just want to emphasize more than ever, we said that this is to strengthen the bridge between our two schools, where so many of mine now eighth graders are going off to high school, and they have a choice of schools. It's not enough that we're able to say there's only a drama program at the high school. We have a fantastic drama program at the high school, but now Shawshank Tech also has one as well. So just saying that we have the program isn't enough. It's about forming that connection, not just to our district, but to their future teachers as well. And this is a really great way of doing that, and introducing our kids to professional theater. They say that if you want to be a great writer, you need to read great writing. If you want to be a good artist, you need to watch good art. And this is a really awesome opportunity for our kids to see the height of theater in the United States, Broadway, New York. In your packets, I'll say that there are two things that are slightly different than how we ran things in the past. The first is based off a suggestion from school committee member Cutlass the first time I presented this. The first thing he said was he loved the trip. We wished we were going to Ellen Stardust Diner. That was one of the first big changes we made, was making sure we added a meal plan in for that. We've also added in a post-show talkback. So there is a workshop that the kids will go to before they go see the show, and then after the show, in the theater, they will get a chance to talk back with cast or crew members, depending on who's available at that particular show. So whoever just orchestrated that art in front of them can come and talk to them about it and field questions from them. It's an awesome trip. It's a long day, but it is a highlight, and a lot of kids and adults look forward to it.
Thank you so much, and thank you for coming in. Any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
How many students are in both programs right now?
So I'm between shows right now, but, and thank you for coming to see Puffs, by the way.
So cute.
Thank you. I had 55 students involved in that production.
And we are currently rehearsing a grand night for singing, which hovers around 50 students. And actually, yesterday, we auditioned Beauty and the Beast. So I hope you'll all be our guests and be there in April, which will have around 60 students participating.
So my follow-up question, so it's 45 students that are going to be able to go.
Minimum.
What's the process for the students that get to go? How's that going to work?
Like deciding who gets to go.
Yeah.
It is a first-come, first-serve in, through community passes, how we've done so in the past.
Okay.
If this one's anything similar to how we just did our sixth field trip, we took kids to see six in Boston. We did set up a waitlist. In the event enough children are on that waitlist, that it deems getting a second bus, we can look into that. This is time-sensitive, though, and as of the two times we've done this in the past, we still have not filled up one bus. It'd be great if we got two, but.
Okay, thank you.
Just a follow-up question. Is there any, I mean, I was able to look at the price and just understand the breakdown a bit. Is there any fundraising opportunities for students, you know, that may be dealing with hardships or things like that? So this year, no, but we are looking at that for future years to keep this something more accessible to everybody. Sure. Okay, great.
Mr. Parsons?
All covered. I'm good.
Mr. Sullivan?
I think it's a wonderful opportunity. I support it wholeheartedly. I would like to just finally, I know we've been going through some policy, and I'm pretty sure IJ is one of them, field trips. I don't think we've made significant changes, but I would just encourage you to please check to make sure that any changes we may or may have not made, that we're aware of before. But I'm fully in support. I think it's wonderful. I think we do a good job here with our youth sports. You bring up an excellent point with our community youth sports programs really being a feeder for our high school programs. I know we started some integrated basketball to similarly be a feeder program to like best buddies and stuff. And I think it's wonderful that you guys are working together to be a feeder system from the Wynn to the high school. So you have my full support.
Well, as I said, yeah, theater is the sports of theater.
Yeah. And I, of course, like totally support it. I think I responded right to you with the Ellen Stardust Diner, because it's amazing. Yeah. And so I think it's a nice opportunity to have that as part of the trip. So, no, I've looked this all over, and I think it's great. So if there's no other comments, I think we could move to a vote.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the out-of-state field trips for 2023 Broadway performance of Anne Juliet.
And second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And no opposed, so good luck.
We say break legs in theater. Good luck is bad luck here.
Break a leg.
I realize you wouldn't say that in sports.
It feels personal.
Thank you. Okay. And moving on, next order of business is the approval of minutes. Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
All right. I would like to move the committee for approval of the December 7, 2022 regular school committee meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And no opposed, so motion passes. Next is the submission and payment of bills.
I would like to move for the approval of the payroll period ending December 8, 2022 in the amount of $1,493,126.32.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Russo. There's a motion by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith and a second by Mr. Russo to approve and certify the payroll period ending December 8, 2022 in the total amount of $1,493,126.32. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. That passes.
All right. I would like to move for the approval for the payroll period ending December 22, 2022 in the amount $1,530,815.39 for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, yes.
Seconded by Mr. Russo to approve and certify the payroll period ending December 22, 2022 in the total amount of $1,530,815.39. Mr. Sullivan, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
And Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, and that motion passes for December 22.
Okay. And then finally, I'd like to move the committee for the payroll period ending January 5, 2023 in the amount of $1,460,523. I'll say that again, $1,460,523.38 for approval.
I'll second that.
Okay. Also seconded by Mr. Russo to approve and certify the payroll period ending January 5, 2023 in the total amount of $1,460,523.38. Mr. Sullivan, how do you vote? Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
And Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, and that passes for January 5. Now, moving on to our superintendent and staff reports. So Mrs. Terri O'Regan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have only two updates, although one of them is four pages long, and I'm not kidding you, so it's very good, though. So let me just start with a very short update, and that is a thank you to our Tewksbury Fire Department. They hosted a CPR training to our entire food and nutrition services staff on January 4. They not only hosted one, they hosted two. Our staff is so large, they did that in two trainings for them. So through you, Madam Chair, we will be sending a letter of appreciation and thank you to Chief Joseph Kearns and his entire staff for supporting not only our schools, but all of our students' safety within our schools. Thank you. The next highlight I have for you is quite lengthy, because a lot has occurred since our last meeting, so please bear with me. And this is probably the most important update of the school year. Plus, I figured without Mr. Libby here, I get his time as well. So the district, as you know, has officially opened the new Center Elementary School. Through the leadership and constant efforts of many, and above all, Principal Jay Harding and Assistant Principal Rob Rogers, they have hosted since we last met three days of student field trips prior to the December break. They've hosted six evening parent-student tours during the December break. Over 1,000 people toured over three nights. I was able to attend, and I can attest to you- I was able to attend, and I can attest to you, the pride and excitement that was exhibited by our parents and students as they viewed their new school. I know some of you were able to attend as well, and you felt it. Our staff successfully packed up their classrooms, offices, and workspaces before the December break with the help of our PACs, our administrators, and their fellow colleagues. Weather was on our side as hundreds of crates and large hampers were picked up from our four separate elementary schools and delivered to the Center Elementary School. 99% of those crates and hampers were unpacked and set up prior to students arriving. That's quite a feat. Some of our staff even came in over the break voluntarily and all had time to do that work during the January PD days to get ready. The loss of the empty crates will be picked up this Friday. We had an exceptional experience with our move manager, Eva, and her team from STV. In fact, Eva commented that we had the best school move project she's ever worked on. We also had an exceptional experience with Wakefield movers. They additionally commended our team for this top move project they've ever worked on as well. We had a fantastic vibe from the staff at the start of PD on January 3rd and 4th. Jay and Rob led them through the team building and discovering their building together along with classroom setup time on both days. We had a great opening for our 755 Center Elementary School students, too. Some of you were there to see them getting off the bus and getting out of the car. It was truly a cold, cold day, but the smiles on their faces were heartwarming for all of us. On day one, all of our students entered the CAF and the gym to be met by all of their teachers. All of our students received bag lunches that day, and the staff, all the students and staff, received a red Center Elementary School t-shirt provided from our new PAC, which we all wore on Friday for the first Center Elementary School Spirit Day. As of Monday this week, all students reported successfully to their classroom in the morning on their own, quite a feat, rather than staging in the CAF or the gym. Many did have breakfast in the CAF prior to going to class. Currently, all of our buses are in by 8:50 a.m., and we're continuing to improve on that. Parent drop-off is also going very smoothly. We have successfully pulled all the cars off Pleasant Street at both the Ryan and Center Elementary School drop-off and pickup. When the bus loop is full, with the CES, if you don't mind, I'll shorten my words a little bit, full of the CES buses, the buses that are in waiting to disembark students go down to the high school and stage there until we clear some spot. That way, we're not holding up Pleasant Street by the buses as well. So like the first weeks of every school year, our biggest challenge still is to continue improving and streamlining the bus transportation process and timeframe. It's getting a little better every day. We're very impressed with lunch and recess. You've seen some of the lunches at the new school. It's going so smoothly. This is where you see the design of this new space really work. All of our students in each of the lunches are getting through those lines in about eight minutes. That's, that's quite impressive when you think about doubling the amount of kiddos at lunch, at each of the lunches. The kitchen staff have just been amazing in supporting the students as well in their new space, where they're learning where to reach for everything, all brand new again. So students have now had outdoor recess this week on the new playground and out on the turf. The laughter we can hear from central office is just priceless. It makes this all worth it. Classes are discovering our outdoor roof space, our library, art room, music room, certainly the gym and the open team spaces. We're only five days into the new school with students, and it's truly going amazing. There are several minor details we'll continue to work out as we continue to go through the punch list, still work on the building committee, but it's important to know that we are all moved in on time and on budget. Overall, I want to commend our staff. What a huge mountain they have all climbed, packing, unpacking, and let's not forget the most important piece, setting up and getting, getting ready for their students and maintaining instruction in the class. This is a brand-new environment for everybody. Our parents and our students have just been great. They've been patient, they've been adaptive. Our district leadership team, in fact, at the request of the principal and our staff, did instructional rounds at the new school today. I, I was just so impressed that they all volunteered, those who did, for us to come in and view their classrooms and view instruction. The district leadership team shared their first impressions with Jay and Rob and with all of us, and they described it as warm and welcoming classrooms, more set up than they ever expected in the short timeframe, happy and engaged children, and what an energized staff. So Jay, Rob, and our CES lead custodian Barry truly deserve a trophy at this stage of, of this process because they've been working tirelessly in supporting everyone through this rewarding challenge. While there's still much work to do, the building has come alive, but this construction project truly feels like a school right now with our staff and our students inside of it. So please know, we're currently planning for the official ribbon-cutting ceremony during the school day on February 3rd. For the safety of our students and all involved, this is a closed ceremony by invite only, but we are planning for a public showing in open house the very next day, on February 4th, for the community. You'll be receiving invitations from the CES secretaries, Ms. Dougherty and Ms. Connors, as they plan these large events with us. So Madam Chair, as requested, we're also planning to host the March 8th school committee meeting at the new Center Elementary School, and we'll provide you with more detail at the upcoming February meeting. So committee members, I know you've had an opportunity to see the school. If you'd like more in-depth tours while students are all there, please call on any one of us or the admin, and we'll be happy to accommodate you. And just to the community, we're so proud and so happy that we're at this place right now. We'll continue and hopefully share some pictures with you for those who may not be able to make the open house, but that's only a few weeks away, so very excited. Cheers to everybody for all of the support and the hard work. And that does conclude my update for tonight.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any questions, comments?
Yeah. Ms. Regan, I just want to just commend you on your leadership for making this become a reality. And I know this has been a long, long time in the making, certainly long before I was ever involved in this committee or involved in, in the project. So, so kudos to you and your leadership with this. Just as a follow-up question, just having been there that first day when students arrived anyway, you know, you did comment briefly on the traffic plan specific with the buses. How is sort of the drop-off going for those families that are dropping off? Whether, because you have the Ryan School there and the drop-off in the Center School, and they're in the same location, although different times, how is, are you seeing improvement there over the next, over the last few days as well?
Definitely. And, you know, the design, again, has really worked. Now, it's a change, right? It's a change in habit for, for families taking that long drive, but we, we leave the traffic on Pleasant Street.
Yeah.
The drop-off is very safe. We can stage, I think, what, like six cars at once, drop-off, move, drop-off, move. You know, we're not having congestion. The leaving the school, I mean, we do have a lot of cars dropping off, but as I said, it's relieved some traffic on Pleasant backing it up, but the two separate times are working very well.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Comment? Thank you for the invitation to spend that first day there. It was probably my favorite day that I've had in the schools in a really long time. Like you said, it was great to see their faces, a combination, I think, of coming back from winter break and that being so long and not seeing their friends, and then also the excitement of walking into this building. I want to commend Jay and his staff and Rob because the kids really did seem like they felt comfortable walking in the building. I didn't see one tear. I didn't see one look of like wide-eyed anxiety or anything like that. They were all so eager to get in that building, and that made me feel good standing out there and just made me proud of the work that the, the building committee has done to make this process so smooth. And I can speak that, that drop-off pattern. That first day, I think there was a lot of excitement, and I think there were a lot of people there to do that drop-off, probably parents who may have wanted to see the whole process themselves, but I'm a drop-off parent in the morning for my girls, too, and that process has been so smooth. And we drop off for the Ryan, we pull into that lot in the back and hover and wait for a little bit, and then jump back in after maybe five minutes.
Yeah.
Of waiting. It's so smooth and so easy. So thank you. It was, it's great.
Okay. And Mr. Parsons, anything?
I just want to extend a big thanks and appreciation to all the members passed in, president of the Elementary School Building Committee. Tremendous work, and glad you get to enjoy the fruits of your labor, finally. Very exciting project, and thank you again.
Okay. Just Mr. Sullivan?
Good thing.
Okay. And I don't have any comments other than thank you very much. Okay. And Mrs. McDermott?
I'd like to just give a brief update on the ELA pilot. That is, we're continuing on with the literacy pilot in both Witten Wisdom and EL education, and our teachers are really seeing some positive results with this program. It's been really exciting. We've been fortunate enough on many occasions to see the pilot in action as we're moving through with our, when we, when Mrs. Regan and I visit the principal for our principal visits, but also when we do our district leadership team walkthroughs. In fact, today, as Mrs. Regan mentioned, we were here at Center, and I was lucky enough to stop in a second grade who was doing a lesson with Witten Wisdom, and I had the opportunity to watch some second graders actually using text-based evidence to support a claim regarding whether, whether or not weather patterns have an effect, changing weather patterns have an effect on plants and animals. And so these, they had two different resources to, as, as sources, and they were pulling evidence from the text in preparation for writing a paragraph. It was just really exciting to see, it was exciting to see them working together, it was exciting to see them accessing the text and really using textual evidence in their writing, seeing it all come together like that was wonderful at such a young age. So we're getting very excited and looking forward to coming to you in the spring. We're really hoping for April with a, a proposal, looking for your support with, with one of these programs. It's a unique experience because lots of times when you pilot programs like this, you're sort of looking at apples and oranges in, in many ways, and I've been likening this pilot to more of like Cortland and McIntosh. You know, the programs are so, so similar and, and have, they're, they really have such great qualities for both. It's, it's going to be interesting to see how we, how we end up selecting, but we've, Felicia Chenovich has been leading the teams through the selection process and really determining what, you know, what we value here in Tewksbury and what we're looking for for our students. So we're looking forward to moving forward with that. So we'll be looking to share a little more about that in the spring. I also want you to know that the, the cost of these programs, I'm guessing is, you know, it's going to be a worthwhile investment, but it will be, it will be an investment. And so there'll be more to come on that. I think it's going to have a really significant impact on positive outcomes for teaching and learning. I also want to let families know that kindergarten registration, believe it or not, it's time, it's time to get our kindergarteners registered for the 23-24 school year. And it, amazing, we have all of the information on the, our website. There's a wonderful, helpful informational video that parents can access, and it tells you everything you need in terms of documentation. You can do it all online, you can make an appointment online, and the actual registration opens up on January 17th. That is currently on our website, and we will also be adding that information to the district newsletter as well. Any questions?
Wow.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, I'm excited to see how this ELA pilot goes as well.
Yeah.
It's exciting. Okay. And now, without Mr. Libby here, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Mrs. Terry O'Regan, I'll have you.
I think, you know, our consent agenda is a little light tonight, but I, I would like to point out the hiring of Ms. Kerry Joyce at the Wynn Middle School. If you remember, we were in a lengthy search for the, a highly qualified 12-month secretary that could fill the shoes of Ms. Joanne Kearns after 40-plus years of being an admin assistant within our schools. So we welcome Ms. Joyce. If you get a chance, go over and meet her. She's, she's quite positive and really looking forward to working with our staff and students at the Wynn.
Okay. Great. And.
I'd like to make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And with no opposed, the consent agenda passes as presented. And for our school committee member reports, Mr. Sullivan, I'll start with you on the Elementary School Building Committee.
I think Mrs. Regan said just about it all, other than we do have our elementary school building project tomorrow night. As she said, there's still some construction closeout that's going on. Obviously, there's still some punch list items. If you do show up there and you see people in yellow coats, those are the guys doing the work. So I'll have a further update at the next meeting. And I do believe also on tomorrow night's agenda is we might not be meeting as frequently now that we have our final occupancy, but as I said, I, I will have a better update at the February 8th regular school committee meeting.
Okay. Thank you. And for our CPAC update, Mr. Parsons or Mrs. B. Joni Smith?
So the committee hasn't met, the PAC hasn't met since their last regular business meeting, but they do want to promote the Basic Rights Workshop that is taking place on this Thursday, January 19th. It starts at 6:30 p.m., and you do have to register for that in advance if you're going to attend. It's virtual. So if people are interested, they can email the Special Ed PAC, or they can see their Facebook page, there's a flyer and a link there to register for the Basic Rights Workshop.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And for the wellness advisory, Mr. Russo?
Yeah, there's no updates. We'll meet next on March 1st, so we'll have an update in March.
Okay. And Policy Subcommittee, Mr. Sullivan?
Just obviously, we haven't been meeting due to the, all the activity going on with the new school. I know, Madam Chair and myself, we were trying to get something maybe on the books here, one of the following Tuesdays or beyond, so certainly we will look at that. And I did receive one email from an individual. I'm not going to say necessarily who, but I think they'll be aware they had a policy issue that we're going to put on the agenda relative. So I will email you back in touch base, but hopefully within the next two or three weeks, we can get another meeting on the books. I know we've got through a good chunk of the policy. I'd like to certainly continue that work on now that we're backing up and running in the new school, so.
Okay. Sounds great. If you want to move right into the changes, proposals, and adoptions that are still outstanding.
And tonight, all that we have on the docket is policies for consideration, for revision on second and final reading, and a vote for approval. Those policies are EB, Safety Program, EBB, First Alert, EBC, Emergency Plans, EBCD, Emergency Closings, EC, Buildings and Grounds Maintenance, ECA, Building and Grounds Security, ECAC, Vandalism, EDC, Authorized Use of School-Owned Materials, EEA, Student Transportation Services, EEAA, Walkers and Riders, EEAE, School Bus Safety Program, EEAEB, Drug and Alcohol Testing for Bus and Commercial Vehicle Drivers, EEAG, Student Transportation and Private Vehicles, and finally, EEAJ, Motor Vehicle Idling on School Grounds.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Is there a motion to?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to approve the policies as stated by Mr. Sullivan.
Well, second.
Okay. And so we have a first, a motion, and a second to adopt and for, for, on revision, on second and final reading of EB, EBB, EBC, EBCD, EC, ECA, ECAC, EDC, EEA, EEAA, EEAE, EEAEB, and EEAJ. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And with no opposed, those have passed, and the policy handbook will be updated. Now with some old business, our professional development with Mrs. McDermott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you know, we had two half-day workshop days, the two December days before the break,
So as you know, we had two half-day workshop days, the two December days before the break, and two full-day P D days in January upon returning from break. During that time, our staff fully engaged in our work with our very important district goals around vision of a learner, fostering a sense of belonging, and S E L. We were also able to offer some Spire and Fundations training to our E L teachers, which was a wonderful opportunity. And obviously, our Center Elementary School staff engaged in activities to set up their new space, learn about their new school, and their building and plan for the opening. It was certainly a unique type of schedule due to the move, and I want to thank all of our administrators, our staff, and families for all of their support and flexibility. We realize it may not been, may not have been as convenient for, for everyone, and we were really just so pleased with the high level of engagement from our staff and the positive feedback that we received. It, it all went so incredibly well. I think teachers were also, we were able to build in some time for teachers to have some team planning time around our district goals, and I think that was well-received.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? I did receive some feedback, you know, from some of the, the teaching level, and it sounded like that was very well-received by the teachers as well, so.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah. So, thank you. Okay. And a couple of, one new business item that we didn't cover yet is the school calendar draft.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In front of you is the draft of the 23-24 school calendar. Based on the feedbacks, this is a perfect segue, from our professional development planning in the 22-23 school year, we're capitalizing on two things. Clustering some of that professional development workshop time in the first half of the year to obviously support the implementation of a K-6 E L A new curricula program. That's going to need a lot of support in professional development, but also putting one of those professional development full day at the end or right after the new year. So you can see that January 2nd is a full P D day. What this will do is allow us, like we did this year, to really not only train, but give teachers that time to set up the appropriate instruction as kids come back. When we hit the new year, it's often like a brand-new school year again, and you really need to regroup. So while it was unique in our planning, we, the feedback has been great. We've learned, and we know we can best utilize these days now. We'll see, you know, how this goes. So this is a first draft. We would like a vote from the committee so that we can publish this calendar, which does establish the first and last day of school. You can see that we've already drafted open house days, teacher conference days, and so on and so forth. So as I said, this is a first draft that we can publish with your vote in approval, and if there are any major changes, we would bring that back in front of the committee.
Any questions, comments on the calendar?
I'm really jealous of that P D day after December break. That's awesome. Good schedule.
Good practice. Mr. Sullivan?
I just have one. Where would that day traditionally have been?
That day would have traditionally been in March. So there is still a half-day early release workshop day in March, and unusually for March, we actually have a holiday too, which March is generally a full, full, full month, so we like that full day there. But again, we're going to need those days closer to the beginning of the year for good reason, but also it was really good for the professional needs of our, our staff. And, and families appreciated the extra day out as well, so we did receive that feedback from families, so.
Yes, I think.
It just, we swapped it out with March.
Where traditionally that day?
Yep. That's where it would have been. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the calendar for the F Y 23-24 school year as presented this evening.
Second. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And with no opposed, the proposed calendar passes as presented. Thank you. And then moving on to our next order of business would be our mid-year School Committee review of, oh, the M-CAS, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
2023 M-CAS calendar schedule. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You do have the M-CAS, the Tewksbury Public Schools M-CAS calendar in your packet, and this is for information only, no vote is needed. But as you know, you know, the state puts out the testing windows for districts in E L A math, science, technology, and engineering, and then districts locally decide on the dates that work for their system and schools. We've included those dates in the packet and just want to remind you that those dates are, you know, they're always subject to change around certain circumstances such as weather, but we know it's always helpful for families to have these dates as soon as possible for their own planning purposes. Unless you see any details or concerns that we may have missed, we, we plan to post this to the district website and send it home in our next district newsletter.
Any questions, comments?
I believe it's that time already.
I had one. I'm just, I'm sorry. I'm looking to see if I was right about, I think it's the Biology M-CAS that falls on the day of graduation, on high school graduation. It says 6/6 and 6/7. That was the only one that I, is there any?
And graduation day is typically a full day of school for everybody except our seniors.
Okay. I just had that wrong question.
Oh, yeah, and they, and they take that. And that's a state-determined day, so we don't, we don't have the choice in the high school testing days?
Yeah. And I think that calendar is next year's school year calendar. This is for this year, correct?
This is for this year.
This is for this.
Oh, this is for this year. And thank you.
Oh, okay. Even better.
That was even, yeah, even better. I think that's where my confusion was, I saw the date. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. And then, now we do move on to our mid-year review. Okay. So I just have our mid-year goal-focused evaluation, and this is an assessment that is comprehensive of all of our reviews. So the assessment review of superintendent is the responsibility of the Tewksbury School Committee. This mid-year review is a check-in with superintendent, and it's a goal-focused evaluation. The committee's mid-year review of goals and progress assures that the focus is on what is important for our district's growth and improvement. This is not a summit of evaluation, this is a discussion of professional competence. It's also an opportunity for our entire committee to review the self-evaluative feedback of the superintendent and reflect on the status and progress of goals with the opportunity for discussion and a review of the evidence. The committee reviewed Superintendent Terry O'Regan's goals from August 22, 2022 that were presented in open session. The Department of Education and Secondary Education's Mid-Cycle Assessment Evaluation Report for Administrators was used by members as a rubric tool. All committee members rated Mrs. Terry O'Regan as progressing or met expectations in all categories. Student learning goal, building a highly effective instructional leadership team; professional practice goal, new superintendent induction program, year one; and district improvement goals, Center Elementary School, vision of a learner, and improved visibility and communication with Tewksbury Public Schools stakeholders. Overall, Superintendent Terry O'Regan is making sufficient advancement towards meeting and exceeding the goals established for the 2022-23 school year. She has maintained communication with the members of the school committee and has been effectively working to restore and maintain the relationships throughout all stakeholders within Tewksbury Public Schools. Mrs. Terry O'Regan has developed, presented, and is working through implementation of a well-written entry plan in her first year as superintendent. She has laid out a strategic plan to develop her skills, leadership, and relationships with all stakeholders. The strategy that she has developed and is carefully executing is rigorous but well-structured with measurable outcomes. Superintendent Regan has continued to collaborate effectively with the business manager to work within the budget to obtain the necessary materials needed to remain competitive, successful, and impactful for all. The Center Elementary building project was delivered on time, on budget, despite some of the very difficult, challenging times. Mrs. Terry O'Regan is present in the schools and is an active member of the school community. Despite a rigorous schedule, inclusive of opening the new school, she has maintained and prioritized her support of building administrators and instructional leaders. She has shared the vision of a, the district vision plan and vision of a learner with stakeholders, which will support relationships, build trust, and result in growth for our district and have beneficial outcomes for students. Her continued work in this area will foster an increased sense of belonging and ownership amongst the school and greater community in all instructional practices. The expected outcomes at the completion of the 2022-23 school year will have a positive impact on the district. They ensure that Superintendent Terry O'Regan is directing the district leadership and staff in a forward direction. It's evident that positive outcomes have been at the forefront of her decision-making, and as the year continues to progress, it is clear that the students, teaching staff, and various levels of administration are on a path to success for this year. So, thank you for your work, and if anybody has any other comments?
Just one. It was very easy to write this based off of the goals that you established at the beginning of the year and provided to us, and then kept updated throughout this point. So I just wanted to thank you for that, and it just makes this, that much easier to follow along, and I appreciate the work that you've done to this point. So, thank you for putting that together and making this process that much easier for us to do.
Thank you. Anything? No? Mr. Sullivan?
I'm good, thank you.
I just have one question for you. Have you had to make any adjustments as the year has gone on to where you've kind of reconsidered maybe where some of your goal-setting was that maybe it's not as easy as you thought, or you've had to kind of readjust some of your goals?
I, I think probably not the hopes and dreams and expectations, but at times the timeline. You know, I, I think we have relevant, realistic goals. Where we, you know, end at the end of the year will give us a lot of information and know what our goals should be going forward. I really want to just say thank you, not only for the support, but the feedback and the ongoing communication that I have with each and every one of you, and know that the credit and the evaluation, and you have to do an evaluation of me, but really the credit and the comments you're making for the Assistant Superintendent, the entire administrative team, all of our staff, and, and our school community, because I, I don't do this work alone, right? I, I do this with the team, and we're successful because we're working really well as a team. I thank you for that too, because that is what will make us the best school district we need to be for our kiddos.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Where do I move my paper here? So where were we at? And School Committee Matters of Interest. Mr. Russo?
Yeah, I'll maybe just, just a little shout-out. I was actually able to participate in the DECA program over at UMass Lowell earlier today, so just want to give a shout-out to those kids and Mr. Sullivan for all the hard work and planning that I know goes into that event. I was able to participate as a judge, and I'm sure the day was pretty successful. I know that there are a lot of Tewksbury High School students participating, and I'm looking forward to hearing through about some of the results as some of that unfolds over the next couple of days, and some of that information is shared. So, kudos to everyone that competed today and, you know, and hopefully some of those kids will be moving on to states in, in March.
Thank you for doing that. Mr. Parsons?
Yeah, but none at this time.
No, none at this time. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, just a comment. It's easy to get lost here where we're so student-focused and student-centered. I would be remiss if we didn't just have a tremendous shout-out to our residents as we open a brand-new school, for their trust in the school district, in us as leaders, in the select board, in the former selectmen, in the former school committee, in the investment that they've made to make our 2 through 4 state-of-the-art, up-to-date, safe, secure learning environment, where such of those, a couple of those environments were so awful, we can consolidate our kids, we can consolidate our services. Hopefully, we'll see going down the line, we'll be able to save some money. They're brand-new buildings, the codes are different, they're built much more efficiently now. And I think, like I said, it would be remiss for us, and certainly for me, the community was an integral part of that. There was, I think, 80% of the people that voted. A lot of those people shoulder that increased tax burden. I know the school committees, most of you weren't here. We used to take additional funds. We didn't do that for a while. And like I said, I just, I just think it's very important for us to make sure that we're mindful that those residents, and I'm, I'm very thankful as someone from Tewksbury, quite honestly, that we have those residents that are willing to make that commitment, because I know that 2 through 4, I know having all those kids together and putting them, and the staff in the best learning environment, we're going to see improved outcomes, we're going to see improved achievement for all our learners. So, thank you, Tewksbury.
Well, yeah. Great point, great point. Okay, and I don't have anything to add for tonight either. In terms of future School Committee meeting dates, we have February 8th, 2023, we'll have a budget hearing, March 8th, 2023, also with, including a budget hearing, and on April 12th, 2023, a reorganization meeting and a regular meeting. And for future Subcommittee and Advisory dates, as was mentioned, the Elementary School Building Committee is tomorrow, January 12th, C P A C business meeting, January 19th. Isn't that, is also?
It's just the Basic Rights.
Just the Basic Rights, not a meeting, okay. And Wellness Advisory, March 1st, and Policy Subcommittee, stay tuned. That should definitely be happening before our next meeting. Any future agenda items from any members that you would like to see on February or March? Okay, well, keep me posted if there are. And at this time, we can have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
A motion for Mr. Russo. Second. Second for Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we have adjourned at 7:59 PM. Thank you.